I'll be in order.
For adjutant to the flag, the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll maintain a motion to approve the agenda. I'll make a motion to approve. Thank you Jeff, do you have a second?
Do your own thing as well.
Thank you Ted, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The post, question carries. Uh visitor comments?
As many of you know, our families been uh become aware of sexual harassment and other ha- uh harassment happening within the eighth grade class. We brought this to the attention of administration in the district several times. After months of advocating for our child and the welfare of the entire class, we finally see have seen some progress begin to take place. We understand that it's not appropriate to make snap decisions on a topic like harassment, which is why there are policies in place to guide these decisions. We were very disappointed when it appeared that the district had not followed their policies. Because of this lack, because of this perception and the lack of communication from the administration and school board when we had reached out, we felt we had to seek outside help to improve the environment. That outside perspective from the Department of Education validated our concerns that the harassment taking place within the school was indeed sexual harassment and other harassment, and that the school policies were appropriate, but they were not being followed. When discussing this matter while looking for legal representation, several different lawyers expressed surprise about the way the district was handling the matter. In several instances, the way the district was responding was in a matter that was inconsistent with both state and federal law. Fortunately, we were be able to have a very productive meeting with representatives from the district administration and the school board. We're hopeful that we're getting to be on the same page, but we're cautious. The district really broke our trust on this case. We wanted to express here that, that here tonight, but we also want to express we're still very committed to help improving this situation. We wanted to let you know that after we struggled on trying to get the district to hear us, we continued to reach out for help. We did mention that in our meeting with the district representatives. We reached out to the community as well. We finally decided to talk publicly about what we have been doing privately for months. A letter from the district admini- administration went out to the families of the eighth grade class, but it did not clearly address the gravity of the situation as we had suggested several times. After that, John made a Facebook post and asked if people, asked people if they had other concerns and if they did to reach out privately. Several families reached out and they talked about significant issues like major issues of theft, significant bullying of LGBTQ kids, sig- um including suggesting that those kids should kill themselves and sexual assault. There are a lot of ugly problems brought to our attention. There is a lot of work to be done, but we're willing to help. Many of those families are too. We understand that it takes a lot of people working hard to raise good kids. We really want to work together with you guys to make this um a place where kids, all the kids here feel safe and comfortable in this environment so they can do their best work. A lot of you guys know I'm a nurse, so at some point, all of us are going to be getting older and grayer and they're going to be in charge of us. We need them to be caring, well-educated people when that happens. We all need to raise them right for that to happen. Please continue to work with us. Let's step it up. We can do better. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other visitor comments? Uh hearing none, moving on to special recognizances and honors.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the community, members of the board, just want to thank our Kelly Blight, Terry Richards, Kylie Merk- uh Kylie Merken and Jamie Deespen for their dedication uh the day of caring. Uh we had two events this year, one that was eighty-six, one through seven, for um the number of projects across our community. Um I think they were very impactful and uh they did a lot of legwork on coordinating and working with uh across our community. So we just want to thank them for making the day of caring uh work as well as it did.
Uh approval minutes of the following meetings Monday, April seventeenth and Tuesday, May second. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you Zach, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you Amanda, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, question carries. Some of your bills.
Drew, you want to touch on anything?
Um I went through here and highlighted a few on my copy, um just to give a little bit more info on. Um on the first page, there's a check for thirty-eight thousand to Harry's Frozen Food for, that's for uh middle school pizza fundraiser money.
Just so you know, we're, we're gonna be here for about ninety-seven minutes, so if you want to wait here an hour and a half, you're more than happy, but I know some of you, I too am going to go watch my daughter in a choir concert, so unless you're ready to be here for the next hour and a half, um you might want to. You're free to say. I just want to know what you're here for and how long you're gonna be. Uh we have four presenters that are in the hallway waiting to be there, so.
Thanks. Thank you, have a good night, please.
So, there's also a check to myself tomorrow for seven hundred and twenty dollars. That is for uh uh expense reimbursement for Masbo uh um conference in Duluth at the beginning of May, so that's for hotel and then for mileage. Uh right below that is Palmer Bus, that is our final contract payment for the year to them. Um going on a little bit further, um for our checks added, so the ones that we just uh added since we originally put together the agenda last week. There's one to Huntington Public Capital Corp. for forty-seven thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars and ninety-five cents. This is a uh go up.
Nine sixteen.
Yeah. Angie, look through all the bills or all the, the bills for tomorrow earlier today, keep going up. Uh down on that, that page, down one more. Right there, the Huntington Public Capital Corp., that, that is a uh um debt payment that we make twice a year as part of a, a lease payment, so that is a uh twice a year payment, um nothing really out of the ordinary.
Next year it's paid off.
That one, this one is still remaining, there's still payments for the next few years, but there's another lease payment that we paid off at the end of December for, I think it was eighty-two grand.
I think it was like the energy improvement bond that you submitted that you've been paying off on, that you did the last project.
So this one, this one is still ongoing, but there's another uh energy lease that was paid off at the end of December that will, that's, that's going to uh save us money going forward now. Um going on, looking through the in terms. Uh so these are the in terms that we've written since April twenty-seventh through last week when we wrote our last batch. There isn't, I didn't really find anything in here that really stood out to me. There's one to Broughton's Masonry for fourteen, seven fifty. That is for uh the end of year snow removal, the final billing from them. Um other than that, there wasn't really a whole lot that, that stood out to me. If anybody has any questions on anything or if they want to take a look at any, we can dig them out though.
Any concerns, questions for Drew?
We can use the motion to approve.
And to Angie, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Does Zach?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post, question carries.
I'll speak very, very briefly, Mr. Chair, I, I did share more, 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 more about for the community. Um we have graduation on Friday night, seven o'clock, I don't think there's any issues, concerns, I think Angie got all of your uh RSVPs for uh ending up diplomas and being on the stage, but being in the gym. I don't think there's any issues, there's an end of the year recognition for all of our employees and we don't necessarily have, it's kind of been a, like a different year because we don't have many retirees, Mr. Vance. Um but um I do think, uh I do need to solicit the board tonight on what you want to do and potentially handing out some gift cards. Uh we did that in the past during COVID and you know, the schedule a little different, so I'll just uh ask to figure what your thoughts were and then I'm gonna second Angie out for tomorrow. We can hand out gift cards at our end of year celebration if you wanted to partner, so we can take a look at that, so we'll be giving your feedback on that tonight. Um obviously we're wrapping up concert season tonight, we started sections, I know section softball's tomorrow, I know section, subsection golf is going on, we got a subsection track going on Tuesday at Maple Lake. With sections coming up, we have a lot of postseason play coming up here very quickly. Uh I would say, um I, looking at the calendar just very briefly, um it's busier than busy. I mean, it's crazy busy this time of year, you all know that, a lot of you, like Jeffrey, you've had a graduate, um Chad, you've had a graduate, you know how it goes. Amanda, you're probably putting miles on chasing golf with Chad, you know, Jeff, you're probably getting to go fishing a little bit more. Justin, you just run the frequent flyer miles, Angie, you follow trap and baseball and everything. So I would just say, um key takeaway, just before our next board meeting, um June first, we have our first day of LGBTQ plus, make sure you put that in your calendars. But I would say most importantly, um we have a board retreat that day. So I would ask for the board to come here at noon, I have a little agenda, we're gonna grab lunch at twelve o'clock, I'm asking our leadership to come in that morning. Um for twelve thirty to one, we're gonna review the tech lobby and the budget just in general. And then uh from one to two thirty, you know, really just talking about, um you know, today, uh Spark Twenty-Seventh's team was here, I can't remember your name, I'm sorry.
Larissa.
Larissa, I got a chance to answer some questions, Larissa, I think Chad did, I think Angie did. So they captured a lot of video, a lot of pictures, they're gonna be updating the website. But honestly, they're just gonna be putting a, a three to five minute clip together, or I don't know how many minutes it's gonna be, you're gonna get a presentation here shortly. But honestly, at the end of the day, that day, we kind of want to say what direction you want to go. I've put some costs out there, um three hundred thousand dollars, I think we'll just keep a status quo, you know, just the cost of everything. Uh from when you started ten years ago, just I think from right now, you're getting at one point four-three percent and I think, I don't know the exact percentage, I mean, I might be a, a one point eight, a one point five percent increase, get you three hundred thousand. Or five hundred thousand, what does that look like? You know, what would that do as for ten years? So I would say it's coming next year, next week, just kind of your thoughts on that, I used solid tax impact. It's also a little fishy, so I'll say it just publicly, it's not like a, it's five hundred thousand dollars more, well, that's a moving target because it could be a one point six, you know, a two point three percent. Well, two, three percent, your property keeps going up, it's gonna generate more revenue than five hundred thousand, so. We're gonna do that, that day, we're gonna remove the timeline and marketing strategy, so we have Katie coming in later in the afternoon. And then realistically, so everybody can go home and, we are all gonna go home, but in June, July, we'll be developing all our marketing and getting ready to kick off on post-walderama, what flyers, so we'll do that next, on the Thursday, the first. Our next board meeting is on the nineteenth, Juneteenth is a federal holiday, but it is not a, non-meeting day, so I recommend we just keep our board meeting on the nineteenth. Otherwise, you got a lot of staff check out, uh with last day of kids coming this week, and Drew's gonna revise the budget, you'll see it on June first for the twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three school year. We think that we're gonna be right at hmm either plus or minus, like less than one percent. Uh as we close out June bills, you know, so obviously our goal is, you know, physically your goal is on June thirtieth. Staffing wise, we're hired for next year. Uh I, you know, you're gonna see some recommendations for hiring tonight. There's a cleaning schedule on anything except for June, as soon as people walk out of here. Like a legends is, uh I got record numbers because of, you know, closures of daycare. Other than that, Drew, anything I'm missing? Otherwise, just you, as you know, there's just a lot of stuff going on. Any questions, concerns? Custom report, no change. Food service report, you're gonna get a detailed report from our wonderful food service director back there in Bridget, coming up shortly. Revenue and expenditures, you know, I got our second installment accounting, so there's really nothing significant to really review there. You just saw our review of the bills, we're gonna be right at, we're gonna be right at what we budgeted, you know, when you say plus or minus, well, it's gonna be tight, I mean, like, might be a little right at zero, yeah, I'm not gonna say zero, like right on the money, but it's you're pretty, you're pretty, it's pretty dang close to budget actual. Okay? Then I would say the next thing you want to do is just accept our donations. And so donations are listed here. So consider proof of resignation number twenty-three, accept donations. I'll entertain a motion for that. Thank you Jeff.
I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, question carries, consent calendar.
I would just share this, obviously we had some record issues with Alps, we had a few extra coaches. Uh tonight, I don't think we're right accepting. Long story short, um our egg teacher has accepted a position in another district in St. Louis hometown. So we kind of knew about this and I want to thank him for all he did. We, we requested for our egg teacher, we didn't get a single, we have one application, we interviewed her. She did not accept the position she was offered, she turned us down because she's got a boyfriend that works in the metro and she's very living in Clearwater and just making the community was gonna be difficult. So we asked our fax teacher if she would ever consider, she lives on a beef farm and she's very active with FFA and she said she's very happy to. So she's, we, I said, look, can we post your job and see if we can find a fax teacher? Lo and behold, Sierra just graduated from SDSU two weeks ago, um in fact, one of five, only two people actually, this is the first and only job she applied for. Um they're moving here because she, her boyfriend, well, Alexandra, Tonwood area. So she interviewed and she was a top ten and we hired her. So I'm gonna recommend you hire tonight and she's gonna take over our fax program and Tiffany Collins is gonna go over and replace Nick. Callie Piggle is uh gonna be recommended for hire tonight, replacing our uh, our, our teachers calling on, who resigned and this is
Ryan.
Mariah, John's room. So we interviewed, we interviewed three applicants and Callie is been a lifetime fourth grade teacher and she lives in our district, her kids go to school here. What I understand is she was another rock star teacher, so we're very lucky to get her. And then we needed junior high, tennis coach and art consultant, we hired him, so it's kind of proactive. So we had extra kids, uh today you're accepted change of status on these two, and these are the resignations we have at this time. I think that's it. And then the extended school year, this is ESI, so just kind of school year for special ed students, so we're just getting additional services, so this is a special ed summer school, so. I recommend approval, the consent calendar.
Oh, there you go, motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Zach, do you have a second?
I'll second it, gonna have two questions. Um how is our mentorship program going with the older teachers and the younger teachers? We worked pretty hard on that a couple of years ago, is that doing well or just snapshot? How's that been going?
Well, as far as I know, and I, I'd have to call up with Scott, but we've been meeting monthly, they, I don't think you had any ment- did you have a mentor this year, I don't think you did. But uh every one of our new teachers got a mentor, they met monthly, went over some topics. It was a big deal at the beginning of the year because workshop, we think came in on a Monday, out with their mentors and they were available all week to kind of work them through and then we met every month. I think they maybe even did one peer observation that helped them grow.
We need to add to the, uh, the mentor board meeting, take some presentations.
Yeah, absolutely. I do think there's gonna be a change too, you know, with Sarah, you're gonna make, I have a recommendation in June that we're gonna do an admin shuffle. Sarah's gonna make the plus money next year and she's gonna take on great um teacher mentorship as Scott goes up to our middle school, so current status over elementary. So I do feel like it's gonna leave a little more energy behind it. But let's see where the ball is rolling currently, I think that would be good, snapshot.
You know, the other question I had would be, when some of these people are leaving for various reasons, we're getting feedback on that, correct? Perfect, I'm happy.
Yeah, we have a reason, yeah. And why are you leaving? Collecting, yes.
Like exiting.
Exit.
Exiting.
Yes.
Perfect.
Well, this year it's a little weird because we have one that just decided to go work in the private sector because.
And that's valid answer, I mean. I mean, everybody has their reasons.
Okay, we have a motion, it was a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, question carries.
Bridget, did you have a presentation?
Yeah.
Did you share with me?
Didn't share.
Yeah. Did you want me to present something?
Oh, no, I have.
She's. I was like, I, I didn't have anything I could share.
She's so contained.
I've been off since last Tuesday, so I have to apologize, my daughter got married Saturday, so I just
Congratulations.
Did everything. So, I actually got today off, I came in for the meeting, so I didn't have anything to share with you.
No, that's okay.
We have, um, just touching base on the free breakfast and lunch going into next year, um since that passed. MD really has not provided us any concrete updates as of yet. Right now, I'm not sure what's expected of us as far as our monthly recording changing, um any type of reimbursement rates. They are looking to have our reimbursement rates back out to us sometime in July. Uh they are certainly requesting that we have every family still continue to fill out the applications for education benefits. Our reimbursement rates will be based on those applications, even though it is free breakfast and lunch. Um we will get more reimbursement um for those families that would qualify under that reduced rate or that free rate versus full pay. They are currently creating a completely separate website for uh the free breakfast and lunch. Uh right now, there's just a Q and A section for all the school districts that are currently going to go with the program or interested in doing the program. Um and that's all I have right now for what's expected of us. They do have a webinar scheduled in June that they will hopefully have a lot of updates and kinks worked out for us. So more on that to come. Uh we were also awarded a ten thousand dollar farm to school grant earlier this year. Uh this is going to allow us to partner with local producers to provide fresh fruit, vegetables and proteins. I have been in contact with Nathan Genegus, um at Genegus meets about sourcing a local bulk beef with this grant. And um right now, we'll hopefully just buy it small enough quantities until their new facility is up and running and we can ramp up um to a larger quantity from there.
Can I just share one thing, the reason I logged into this is because I want everybody to kind of see that, I just, I want you to understand the magnitude of what's going on. So this is the money we received this year in, in food service, so when people go in, you know, like the rankings, I have a credit card and I eat here and I have four kids, oh, I have three kids eat here. And uh, you know, so it charged my credit cards, the revenues came in, uh I, I don't know, like, but you're talking about a large amount, a hundred and three quarters of a million dollars. You know, so when you start thinking about that's people will pay, if you're free, you never, you don't put money in for this and if you reduce, you pay significantly less, so. I just would think so everybody knows in context, that's just been a lot. Three hundred and s- um three hundred and forty-five public schools, if we're sitting on three quarters of a million dollars for a beef inside school, you can understand the price tag, you're gonna have to figure out, because that revenue is what she built in her budget, so when she's sitting on about four hundred and fifty dollars positive, so when she wants to go and buy food, if it's a fluctuation in price, she obviously has to balance the budget. But now the state of Minnesota is gonna set what that, what the reimbursement rate is, so she serves a lunch that costs, let's just say a dollar sixty-five, so you gotta go off and go over there and you cook it and provide it for like a dollar sixty-five, you mend your lunch, you know, she has a full set of bar four options. Whatever she's buying is gonna have to all be calculated to, on the other end, when a kid walks through there, it needs to be a dollar sixty-five, the state of Minnesota hopefully is gonna reimburse us like a dollar ninety, so we're making thirty cents on a meal to cover our overhead. So you can imagine the stress they're gonna have because that's what we serve out here in Manawaska. We have not raised our lunch prices for, well, we don't raise them a lot, we're still pretty cheap, I don't even know what the lunch rate is right now.
Uh three-ten for the high school.
Okay, so three-ten, so she has to try to generate a meal that's gonna be under three-ten on all operating costs. So the state of Minnesota is gonna pick up the entire tab, so I'm just saying when you look at this, they have to cope that a little bit because people aren't hungry, they're like, and now, all a car, which, you shut that down because they'll still get plenty of the rankings. You know what I'm saying, like, in the old days, and I would say for the other two that her and her old team have done a phenomenal job. It was like four years ago, before COVID was even a thing and we were doing this, we were, I think at one time we were thirty-eight thousand dollars upside down, like people not paying their lunch balances, I think we're under five.
Uh we've creeped over six now. I'll touch on that.
So, you know, we're trying to collect that all out because while our food balance is very healthy, that debt, that sixty-six thousand dollars, you can't take out on this. You still have an angel account? We do. So if you come and talk to me and you want to get it covered, we, we can, I mean, you know, talk to me, if you talk to your principal, whatever, you know, Brian Little, Little Jackson needs some lunch money because you, you know, something happened. You know, it's as simple as call your counselor, uh we, I tell Drew, we transfer money over and we pick up your lunch tab for, you know, three months if we need to, then we revisit it.
We have one family currently that um didn't qualify for free or reduced this year, but because of medical hardship, um they're benefiting from the aid fund.
So I just wanted to share the context, like I think it's really cool that we're gonna get free lunches and free breakfast, that's me. And as superintendent of public schools, awesome, okay. Okay, if I remember it. You're gonna need to come up with seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, we've been getting revenue, there's, the state government, right? Right, so. But I, but I
I would say though
but you want to say that when she charges three fifteen, she can reduce a meal that's three dollars. If the reimbursement rate becomes a dollar sixty-five, she's gonna have to serve a lunch that's under a dollar sixty-five. And it's not gonna be a three dollar reimbursement rate, correct?
No.
So you just need to understand that a free lunch and a free breakfast, which the government, state government's gonna set that reimbursement rate, she has to serve a meal that still turns, I don't want to say a profit, but we're gonna be able, it's still cashable, you, you have the cash flow. So just in, I want you to understand the stress that she may be feeling the next ninety days when they don't have interface, they don't know a budget, they don't know your reimbursement rate. You've been providing free breakfast well before I ever got here, I don't know if it's been for twenty-five years, but the board's always given free breakfast. Because we're a rural community school, some kids are getting on the bus at six in the morning and they get a free breakfast when they get here. Well, your subsidy's not like ten thousand dollars a year, you're taking that out of the general fund, um she's gonna have to figure that out.
And we anticipate an increase of students participating in the breakfast and lunch now that it's free across the board. So, more labor, more food costs. But um back to the grants with the um farm to school grant, we also received seventy-five, I'm sorry, sixty-seven hundred dollars um to purchase any equipment we need to offset what we might not have um in moving with the um fresh veggies and protein. So right now, um we're looking to upgrade a couple of our holding warmers with that um funds. We're a little short some days when we're, depending on what we're um feeding the students, we may not have enough warmer space. So we will definitely benefit by having that equipment grant. And then touching on our negative lunch account balance, um it is um creeping up around sixty-five hundred dollars right now. Uh the last two to three weeks with school and everything happening, we just really saw it explode where I don't know, families just all of a sudden decided it wasn't a priority to put
They probably think it's already free.
Funds. Well, we, we have had some people who have made that comment, so we have had to educate a few families that, no, it was not effective immediately. All the families that hadn't paid in the last four plus months um were sent final letters stating um that they do run the risk of being placed with a third-party collection agency in June. I did speak with Mike Peck at the credit bureau of Alec and he's given me all the details of what they need to start the collection process whenever we decide to pull the trigger. I also was um approached by a local businessman here in town who has generously offered to pay off uh all of our accounts in um bad debt. And I felt like we really should kind of focus first on those families that are really truly struggling, so I did So I did speak with Mary Walsh on getting me the list of the families that we have currently negative. And she gave me her recommendations for those families who she really felt were truly struggling with, um, not being able to pay bills. Um, so we'll look at that before we do anything in June with the collection agency. So again, that was very nice. Um, I haven't asked him if he would like his name released, so when I touch base with them, um, I'll let it, I'll let you know. We do have one, um, physician that we will need to advertise for. I did have, um, one person who was a seven-hour, she resigned effective immediately back on April twenty-eighth. Um, we also had a very part-time dishwasher who came in three days a week for three hours a day. She is not coming back next year. And then we had one of our six-and-a-half-hour cooks request to reduce her hours down to four hours a day, uh, next year. She's actually seven. And, um, still just wants to keep going. Um, what, um, what I did is I really, um, worked with our head cooks on streamlining our menu offerings next year, really being in line with, um, what's very cost-effective, what the students really like to reduce any kind of waste. Um, and, um, with that, we're hoping that we need less hours, less manpower. And we'll be able to just get by with adding back one seven-hour person. So we'll, um, get an ad out to Angie here to post, um, for that position. Otherwise, we're in good standing with everybody else coming back for next year. Um, I also had a Cisco buying group meeting, which is a group of districts that all buy their food through Cisco, um, out of St. Cloud. And, um, we were able to secure group pricing with many of our repeat vendors, uh, to help with the cost for next year. Um, they are also seeing a nice, uh, steady decline on their food costs coming in, so that's also great going forward. And then the last thing I have an update on is the summer program at WIN. Uh, we will again be providing both breakfast and lunch. Uh, the breakfast itself will be a grab and go, um, prepared by myself. And then the lunch, uh, we have asked the Nutcracker to, um, give me a price. Uh, they did a lot of the lunches last year for the program. And Dorothy, uh, we secured a price at five dollars and fifty cents per student. And she is going to, whatever her lunch special is for the day, she will provide the students at the summer program at WIN. So that worked out really well and she is very thankful for the local business.
Good. Thank you, Bridget. Sorry to come in.
Oh, that's all right. My feet, I can actually walk on my feet today, so a few blisters.
Mr. Mark.
Okay. I don't have a whole lot of.
It's okay if it's not long as Bridget's.
Not as long.
I got interrupted, it's fair.
Um, first gonna start up with, uh, the current school year. So last year, last spring, um, the federal government had a program called the Emergency Connectivity Fund. Um, requested for two hundred, or I requested for, to, uh, get two hundred and twenty Chromebooks for incoming fifth and ninth graders this year, as well as a hundred iPads to replace some at our elementary school. I think they went to the third grade and that was approved. Um, a hundred percent reimbursement through this program. That was about a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars last year. Um, that allowed us for this, this school year, we installed, uh, new desktop computers in all the classrooms as well as monitors. And then the audio systems in the classrooms were, they weren't original, they were twenty to thirty years old at least. I mean, they're close to original. Uh, to replace those, they, some of them wanted microphones, so these have microphones on and working in. So up-to-date equipment in the classroom, just some basic type of stuff. So that was for this current year, for this twenty-three, twenty-four school year, uh, requested again through the ECF. They still had some funds available. Um, requested to get two hundred and eighty Chromebooks for next year's incoming fifth and ninth grader, I'm sorry, this year's, next year's fifth and ninth graders, and also to replace some Chromebooks that are two carts at the elementary school. So that's two hundred and eighty of those and another hundred iPads, this time to go to the second graders. They'll get new ones. Their current ones, I think, are about six years old. That was approved, a hundred percent reimbursement. And then along with that, same program, um, it's very specific, input devices for, in case of COVID tech funding, I see it as COVID funding, uh, to communicate with the kids and the, the teachers to communicate that. I also requested, uh, for the teachers at the elementary school, Scott, uh, I, you know, gave him some options. He preferred iPads for his teachers, so they all got new iPads. Um, out here and at WIN, all the teachers got a fourteen-inch, you know, full-size Chromebook, um, that they can use for, you know, lighter-duty stuff. Most of the stuff they do at home, email, all the Gmail stuff, uh, they can do off of it as well as run the meetings. They're nice and light with, again, a full screen on it. Um, ECF funding for this year that they a hundred percent reimbursed was about a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars.
Excellent.
Yeah, that was some nice extra funding. Um, and then every year, there's another federal program called E-Rate that, again, it's very narrowly specific to networking of a school, um, fiber that we get. We get that every year. Starbucks telephone, they lease it to connect the buildings. And then also the, the connection from, from RVIC is through Starbucks telephone. Um, so all that is, every year we, we do this E-Rate program. But this year, because some of our equipment now is getting older, I also submitted to get a replacement firewall that we're gonna replace this summer and the access points at the elementary school I'm starting with to get those replaced. Um, and that was accepted as well. It was about a fifty percent, um, reimbursement, so another twenty-two thousand, a little over twenty-two thousand dollars. Uh, will be, once we, we pay for it, then they'll reimburse it, but it's been approved, so that'll come. And again, with, with all that funding, that is helping us do some of these things and it'll set us up good for next year because all the schools will need, next year I'm planning to do this, access points, roughly a thousand dollars, probably not quite, um, but we have ninety-some of them, so it's, it's gonna be a, a big haul for next year. But we're looking much better and well as all of our server, the tech levy is, it's about coming up on, what is it, like eight, nine years old now? It's coming up on ten years old. That's about the life of equipment and we got it all back then. Um, it's been good, it's solid, but it's, we need to replace all the switches, all the access points, all the physical servers for the VMware. So, um, next two or three years, that's my plan. And each year, the, the E-Rate at least goes for a couple more years. Again, they, it's still a process, you have to submit it, but generally that's accepted. We usually will get about a fifty to sixty percent reimbursement to help with those costs. Um, just a couple other points to go over for some, some summer projects and then I'll be done. Uh, Marco is replacing the screen in the auditorium, uh, June eighth and ninth, as long as everything is, is gonna be, uh, received in time. Um, that's kind of a big deal where we're running down to put up a screen right now, but, uh, that'll be updated. That was original and it died about halfway through the year. Security camera sensor is gonna be updated, wireless server, um, so the access points that are existing in these buildings will at least be up to latest code until we can get replacements. Um, our VMware will be updated by some, these are all with help of the vendors, um, updating our switching as well. And then we're also giving those two hundred and eighty student devices ready, um, labeling them for the different kids and then we'll buy cases to put on all of them. So that's our summertime plans. Yep, I have. This, this will be the first summer I have a full-time Mary Creasy. Um, she's full-time and this will be the first time I have somebody full-time working, so.
Good.
Should be good to go.
Number thirteen, Mr. Chair, we did get our board, we did get our transportation, big boat update for around twenty-four, uh, twenty-three to twenty-seven. I know we have Lars here. He's our local Palmer route. But this is from the corporate headquarters, um, and Kato, I don't know, I don't know, you can see the, the layout on page. You can see the full contract, but you can kind of see the, uh, the grid. We, the other day, uh, Palmer's done a phenomenal job helping us out, but it doesn't look how it costs. It's definitely going up. Will we like, lucky, will we look and see what the legislature approved, uh, make sure that we, we can get the revenue to pay for it. I'm wondering, Lars, did you want to say anything?
No, just, uh, we'd appreciate the opportunity to continue to, you know, transfer the students. And the site's, you know, has forty, I have forty employees that, you know, come from this, so, um, twenty-five buses, nine vans, transporting twelve hundred students, up to twelve hundred, uh, regular students and up to fifty, uh, fifty-five special education students.
Tonight I'll approve it because it's our only bed, we have to transport it, so.
Any questions for Palmer?
Is there like a fuel escalator in here? Like if fuel goes down, we pay less or if fuel goes up, we pay more?
No, I think there's always a, a fuel surcharge, I think it's on, you have to go.
Palmer pays about a quarter first and then everything above that goes to district.
Sound page thirty-five. Number fifteen.
Okay. Want to entertain a motion to approve?
I don't think I can approve.
Can anybody jump at the opportunity that all kids, thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Angie. You all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, somebody wants to go invest like thirty million dollars into a.
Puzzles? And fourteen.
Then find some employees. That'll, that'll be interesting. We'll see on the radio. The next item is approving our new auditor. Um, our, our, we, this, we, so we used to have, uh, Ed, Ed and his team, uh, my first three years and then we've had Brian the last, maybe the first four years. The last year, Brian's come on and he, I don't think he even submitted a bid. Uh, I, right, we're gonna defer it. He's like, it's okay. This is a great move for us. Nothing against our former auditor, but, um, the recommendation is we gotta, we gotta, we just gotta bid. They're out of St. Cloud. They do a lot of schools.
Is this our only bid?
Yeah.
We didn't get a bid from our accountant. Do you know why?
We've asked him, but I would tell you.
Was it true?
No. No, we tried to go with Drew's, uh, we used to, we tried to get Drew's company that he worked for, I'd Bailey.
Yeah.
They're just not taking any new accounts.
C L A is good.
And C L A is really good. And honestly, I'll just be honest with you, I bet he gets to it in about a month. There was a deadline. He never submitted anything. He called, did you get it in? I'll get to it. I'll get to it. And I bet he turns it in after the Fourth of July. And he's an auditor. It's like, that's not, like, that's like step one. It doesn't work that way.
Is that, is that a fair assessment?
Yeah. So we're, this is a good move for us personally, so. I hope you never watched the video, but.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries.
Tonight we have Katie.
Yeah.
And her team are here to present on Spark Twenty-Six.
So we used to. You've used them before? We use them. You're good.
Well, they're very big. They're big.
Do you want me to click? Are you gonna push for it? All right.
I give you the mouse, you can click away.
Yeah, well, either one, it works. Um, so thanks for having us today. This is Spark Twenty-Six. Obviously Katie Ellenberger, founder and creative brand strategist, and Larissa is here with me, um, lead content and brand strategist. We were here all day for our photo and video shoot, so it was really great. Thank you for taking the time out of your day for interviews. Um, so some really great things, um, on campus and just really excited about telling that story and doing that, um, website. Um, everything from the CNC machines to tech to robotics, um, just got to see the gamut, um, across all, all four campuses. So, um, a little bit about our team. Um, so we are a full-service creative design agency focused on, uh, strategic thinking, user experiences, implementation. Um, just put a few pictures in of the kind of the leadership team that's been working on your account. Um, we are a team of fifteen to eighteen that are working on, on your services, um, at any given month. Um, of course, it's my picture. Addie is director of operations, project management. Stephanie's art director. Larissa here, content lead and brand strategist. And Margaret, um, automotive video is senior graphic designer, web designer. Um, so there's a number, there are a whole host of us based in Glenwood, uh, but we're a distributed team. And so we have employees, um, from Fargo, all kind of along the ninety corridor of Fargo to Minneapolis, um, serving regional, local, and, and national accounts. Um, just to recap a little bit of what we've done in twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, putting together the fall newsletter with the assistance of Angie and, and submission of content, focusing a little bit, a little bit differently in this next year, um, working on having a little bit more community focus for tech levy that we could split out. Maybe it's twenty-four pages for, um, school district, but maybe four or eight pages can be sent out to, um, all community members. Next page, um, worked on a number of communication efforts, just put a few up here, um, doing the preschool announcements, the leadership changes, um, staff features, um, location changes, any kind of district news. We put together, um, news articles that is shared on social media and both on the, on the news on the website. We worked on a number of changes on the WIN Academy page updates. So considering that the website is now, I think we're about four to five years old, it's pretty ancient in terms of a website. We've done a few facelifts here and there. Um, we did the homepage last year, working on the WIN Academy and you'll see the next one is Little Lakers Preschool. Um, really focused on how can we make sure that parents are understanding the offering that you have, the classes. Um, worked on some photo updates here. Lane Studio, um, went around with Angie and, or Lane worked on these photos. I did and kept here today for, for the next round. Um, we have significant updates that can happen in terms of menus, which we'll get to in a little bit. But menus, middle school, um, elementary, as you're seeing leadership changes, just how can we showcase all the great things that we, um, took photos of today and making sure that people see that, that same reflection of your brand on the website. Um, the photographer noted as we were, you know, kind of wrapping up for the day, he's like, I can really tell this is a really great school. And if you can tell that through walking around the hall all day and taking photos, how can we make sure that we're showcasing that in through content and, and, um, photography on the website? Um, some additions this year, we started working on digital media campaigns. We really hit the preschool pretty heavy, um, in January, February. It seemed like it had some pretty roaring success in filling, filling out. I know you're not pursuing Starbucks right now as an option. Um, but for all of these digital camp, um, digital campaigns, we did campaign strategy, media plan, content design. Um, this one, they also included a postcard and social media plans. Uh, the analytics are, you had a hundred and sixty-four thousand impressions of an audience of over twenty-three thousand, appearing seven times per person with some, you know, clicks. It's gonna have all that data, so you should have that in your, in your board book, but seeing cost per clicks and different engagements and getting off to your website, um, those are, um, really good. Analytics there. We love to say numbers don't lie and we like to see some proof in that. So here's a few more of the preschool ads that ran. And the next ads on the next page chip were, um, for joining the preschool team. And I believe your analytics were that you had a number of applications, um, for the preschool team as well as the next page, but you said eighty-nine thousand for doing the K six places teacher. So hearing the approvals that you're making on the hiring today and, you know, gathering some of these really, and capturing some of these really great teachers, just making sure that the word is, the word is getting out. So for this ad, a hundred and forty-three thousand impressions, um, audience of twenty-nine thousand. So again, the cost per click is less than, you know, sixty-nine cents. So, um, it's doing pretty good in terms of engagements and reaction shares and save, so twenty-four shares. That's getting, that's getting in front of some people. So it's really great. Um, the last ad right now is just wrapping up, um, so it's in progress right now, but the kindergarten registration, just kind of a last, last push of people that haven't registered, making sure that they're making Minnewaska their decision, um, over open enrolling in, in other districts. Um, again, same with strategy, media plan, content, and design. At now, we're sitting at seventy-five thousand with an audience of eleven thousand. Um, this is a little bit higher cost per click, um, but you're still getting engagements of four hundred and thirty-five, so seventy-six reactions, one comment, three shares. So pushing forward with digital media as a way to kind of tell our story for, for Minnewaska and on social media. Of course, there's a whole host of things that you could be doing in terms of our media plan with digital media, but we started with just social. Of course, there's a whole host of things that you could be doing in terms of our media plan with digital media, but we started with just social media campaigns. Um, website development updates, the three main ones that happened this year were pretty significant, there was a WordPress core update that does happen often around December and July, so that happened in December. Um, plus the troubleshooting around any sort of WordPress core update. Um, another very significant change, um, was the upgrade, the server to the PHP eight and to test for compatibility. And updating Google Analytics to, to GA four, which many of you in business are probably also doing a number of these things here, making sure that we're getting the right analytics. Um, total of a hundred and forty updates from July one through five-nine, um, twenty, a hundred and twenty-three plugin updates, seventeen theme updates, just making sure that you're up and running at all times. Um, definitely database and, and post revisions, along with a, a number of other, um, website updates that happened. A bit more smaller scale than. Some of the website analytics, um, over the year from May to May, right now you're seeing at over a hundred and fifty thousand impressions for fifty-four thousand users. Um, in the month of April, just pulled that one, um, we had that thirteen thousand, um, impressions and visits and sessions and six thousand users, so there's some significant data there. Um, I also really like seeing the difference between mobile and desktop, which is shows, showcases the importance of making sure that. The site is mobile responsive. Um, I also really like the pie graph on the left that talks about like the organic search and how people are finding and landing on your pages. Um, so more annual data there on the page performance, you'll see the homepage is obviously the most visited page, but, um. I would say significantly, you have activities and calendar and community edit that has been ranking in that top five, um, over and over, so how can we make sure that we're. Putting the right information on that page, so it can do a little bit of the heavy lifting for you. I'm assuming in terms of activities, I've been sending out the live links and things to my family that doesn't live in town, so how can we make sure that people are finding that, that information? Um, but that's some pretty significant data, and also even seen seven, um, human resources pages, um, maybe not hiding that under that department anymore, but making employment become part of more of the main navigation. Um, and just not, just kind of reorganizing some of that, there's some opportunities there within the website. Um, the Google search is very interesting, considering you're showcasing impressions on, on things that don't even involve the school, such as Hannah Millbrandt. Um, so watching, I think you have a lot of opportunity in, um, search engine optimization, um, making sure that people are finding, finding you for what they're searching for. Twenty-three and twenty-four, um, we did some significant work on just thinking through that strategy, coming up with the three core rules, uh, not core rules, sorry, um, key objectives. And this is part of the conversation that we'll have in strategizing and communicating and talking through this, um, in, on June. Um, but increase kindergarten enrollment by positioning MAS as the school district of choice, retaining current student enrollment by elevating communications and community efforts. And garner, garnering public support for critical funding such as the tech levy and the potential future referendums. Um, I won't read each of the next slides here, um, there's significant things that we put in here about internal, um, for the opportunities and tactics. Through internal communications, external communications, um, events and community relations. For the kindergarten enrollment, um, there's more opportunities and tactics for the next objective, on the next screen, again, um, identifying internal, external, and community relations. Opportunities for each of those. Um, and then moving into the tech levy. Strategy. Um, just really that establishing the comprehensive communication strategy to make sure that people are getting the right information, um, about the tech levy and, and how we can. Showcase that through landing pages, through, you know, a number of different things and, and community communication. Uh, plan and develop clear and consistent key messages, implement integrated communications and marketing tactics, and establish some of those KPIs, um, to evaluate what's working and. And how you're moving into that boat and what we're hoping to see. Um, again, opportunities and tactics for internal and external, making sure that, um. That your team has the right information to be able to talk to parents if they have questions or to talk out in the community. Um, external, like I said, like a landing page with information of what, you know, what is all covered, it's not only tablets in the classroom, it's the robotics, it's that CNC machine and things that we saw today. And that's part of the reason we started doing that video and photo today is kind of start prepping that story to tell that. Sell that through news, through visual, but also what makes, yeah, what makes a Minnewaska great and how we can have that built out on the, um, about page even. Um, just kind of. Letting, letting the whole community know, and there's, this community is strong and their generation's support, but, um, just making sure that everybody's feeling that and. And that one-to-one and mobile devices and all of those are, are showcased there. So putting together, um, all of those strategies, putting together a fund or an investment for next year. If you want to flip the next screen to actually. Um, so where we sat for twenty-two, twenty-three, which is in progress right now, we had the digital communication and web maintenance was twenty-two, five. Community education activities was forty-five, website hosting and maintenance was sixteen, eighty-eight, and where we at from, really, we were on budget until we hit the preschool. Um, so now we're sitting at the overage and media buying fees at twelve to sixty-two, so you're sitting at a total forty-two, six, thirty-eight. So our proposal for next year, based on the strategies that we've identified and that we can, you know, obviously be in much further communication and conversation about. Um, twenty-three, twenty-four, setting the base at forty-two, five, so we can really focus on redoing some of that web, um, those websites, those webpages. Um, continuing to hire some of the best people and doing some, telling those stories. Community education activities, we bumped up to sixty-five, we have a number of questions that are up to coaches right now, but how can we showcase? Coaches and advisors and what they're doing in terms of activities. Um, and promoting in, in terms of community education as well. Website hosting, as costs, we saw costs go up everywhere, our base cost for website hosting went up as well, so we're sitting at twenty-three, eighty-eight. And tech levy support right now, based on like strategies that we've identified and the number of deliverables, we have the tech levy support at thirty-seven, eight hundred, so the total investment. We separated those out because the twenty-three, twenty-four digital communication going year-round with tech levy would be basically starting now-ish, but July one through, through that November support. Um, for a total investment of eighty-nine, one eighty-eight. Any questions?
Somebody keep giving me questions? It's not an actual item, right?
No, that's, it's not an actual, you know, you have to get contract and approve it and change. Um, discussion, but I wanted Katie to get here. Because next, like I said, next Thursday, we're gonna have, uh, a border trade. What, what do you want to do? You know, ten years ago, uh, my guess is, uh. You went and passed this tech levy and, uh, you go. You go to the board then, right?
Mm-hmm.
You have the capital project levy. You know, you come out through a building and you can probably see this smart board in your room, I don't know if it was bought then. After the tech levy, but you can see a lot of, uh, first generation smart boards that are floating around the building. Can't get software support any longer, um. You're, you're starting to see that end of life on a lot of the things that, you know, Mark mentioned during his presentation, you had tech levy money. You can see a big spike when I saw the tech levy analysis, where you had a bunch of money and then you had, it seems like then you got a plan together, then you got a bunch of a lot of stuff. And then. A lot of stuff's just coming down to life, you can't, like, there's certain high fat driving everyone because they're, they're first generation, like, app loading the support, they won't get updates. Uh, and the, and the problem is. You go buy all these projectors, you buy eighty projectors, it's like a boiler, you better off just buying ten every ten, every year, and then hopefully only replacing ten, but when you buy eighty, uh, all in the same year. And guess what, you're replacing eighty projectors or eighty bulbs or whatever, because they're all, everyone's getting using the exact model, but. We're, we're gonna discuss this next Wednesday, which I remember next Thursday, what you want to do. Questions for Katie, you think? Thanks for all your updates. So yeah, I think it was a great session, I think. Okay, uh, your eighth graders. Take pictures. I was taking a little psychological. Uh, if you're in the back and you want to leave, we're just gonna, we're gonna go over some of our bids, we're gonna, we're doing our membership to State High School, so if there's a time to exit. I'll say that.
This is it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Chair, item fifteen. Uh, food service, I just need to go get, uh, get your pulse for bids for bread. You can see the bread bid for twenty-three, twenty-four. Just need approval of the bid. I think what I saw in here is.
It's the only one.
Only, yeah, we only got one. That's what I should be using every year anyway.
I'll make a motion to approve. Just like, two seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
Sorry, annual renewal for Lace Country Service Pop Health and C P, we've been with them for the last three years, when I first came here. Uh, Greg, I don't know Greg all, but Greg is probably a wonderful man, but must've came from Iowa, he picked some, I don't know. Some guy from Iowa that I've never met, that I don't know if ever did any, but, you know, we do get a lot of service out of this, like, a lot of OSHA walkthroughs, a lot, a lot of. Everybody in our region uses Lace Country, but we did not, we used them for Montevideo, like I said, if you called or you couldn't find anybody, but it was cheap. Um, but I never saw them come, so this has been really good, and I'd recommend approval.
I'll make a motion. Was that Ted?
Yep.
Zach will second.
Thank you, Zach, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
I recommend eighteen, we continue our membership to State High School League.
I'd like to join the Jet Wolfburg.
Something better comes along.
I'll make a motion to approve. Let, let Jeff second.
I'm waiting for it.
Beer, wow. All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. First readings, following school year handbooks and policies.
I know the policy committee was here with Zach. Zach was in here earlier, anything going on?
No, uh, basically just kind of getting stuff updated, uh, to make sure that, you know, from elementary to middle school to high school, everything is kind of in line with everything along with the Lakers and everything. Uh, pretty straightforward, uh, not a whole lot of changes.
I do think it captures a lot of information from our, our Minnesota Department of Education's audit that we got this year, so there's a lot of policy updates and handbooks that went in, so. More procedural stuff. That's first reading, so. There's any more action there.
Mary, you ready for us?
Uh, I just met with Mr. Saltline Rich, he's a retired great dude, but his job for, covers like. I don't know, like, a lot of counties from North Dakota, South Dakota, Minnesota, but if there's a national or a, a national, a natural disaster or a national emergency. That basically, our Minnewaska grade schools could be a host site to, to host the. American Red Cross, and we worked to, I used to agree with, so if they came here, you know, it just kind of like, hey, if they have something, they have insurance to cover it, if they came in here. They could, they could house people if they, if something happened, and so I. We said renewed it for a while, so I went through it, I met with him, and I signed it on behalf of the district, but I just want to make sure you're aware that we are a host site if a natural disaster happens in our area.
Good deal. Anything else? So June first, we have our board retreat at noon. Um, everybody can make it, I hope.
We kept the board retreat here, you know, we just thought, you know, I know it's hard for people to go on a real true retreat out of town. We made it really simple, just come here at noon, grab lunch, be great if we can start around twelve-thirty, uh, we can get everybody out of here by, you know. Thirty, forty-five, four-thirty, and I, if my tri-tune works, we have a ride, like, if there's, if there's no weather, but otherwise, uh, we're looking at having some type of, uh. Get together at the end of the set. Either on the patio or, or someplace nice.
Figure this out.
To me, the other permitting, so. Other than that, that'd be the board retreat, and then, like I said, the goal of that is really just walk through. This year's financials, which I think we're gonna be pretty much at the benchmark. By then, the goal is also legislature convenes today legally, so we have an idea, I think it's four and two with, uh, in, inflation index not more than three, not less than one. Um, some cross-ups, these special ed. There's also a lot of, I would just say deadly too, is, there's also a lot of things in there that, before you spend your four and two, I actually think. We'll see how it all comes through, where we could be, you, we could actually be in more trouble than. I know they all think it's really good that this wouldn't fall on money.
Unemployment.
Unemployment alone is going to wreak havoc. Because that benefit starts here at the end of May, we have to pay unemployment for all of our employees. So all the pares, our cooks, lucky the buses, drivers are on ours. Um, custodians work through the summer.
They're season one.
But the real concern is, okay, tonight you just approved a bunch of E O S I pares, why would I work when I am going to draw unemployment and not have to work? You know, I, I, they're great employees, don't get me wrong, but a lot of districts are wrestling with this, and they did not fully fund it, so. But the benefit starts immediately in two weeks, well, no, it starts next Friday. So starting in June, we're gonna start getting a bill for unemployment. So, there's a lot of those things we're gonna have to work through. No, no pension reform for non-really ninety-guy, at least now he gets sixty-five and now sixty-six, you got that going for him.
Maybe you'll all be here at sixty-five.
No, we want you here at sixty-six, yeah.
You don't want me here at fifty-six.
Crabby Factory is gonna get mad to us.
Come on.
So.
Well, what's the obligation, do we know how big the obligation is for unemployment?
We just did a rough number, and, you know, sixty-five pares, we're thinking that the most they collect over the summer would be like two grand, twenty-two grand, but that's a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Started getting cooks in there, you could be a hundred and sixty thousand dollars if you're not getting ready for it, you're gonna have to shell out.
That's all included in the four and two?
No, no, that, that, that's, you're not getting.
Not getting additional, right, yeah, so it's included.
And then there's a tax, tax, you know, thing we have to do, we have to increase T R A and our employee, which, you know, we sit down negotiations, he's not gonna think like, hey, no, you're required to do that. You know, so the one point five percent increase that we're gonna pay for every member on T R A off his total whole salary. That's an unfunded mandate, there's a lot of those things that'll be hidden in the details, that all of a sudden, he, he won't get that one point five percent increase, right? Because you'll be, we'll be paying for it, he'll pay a one percent. So he's actually gonna make one percent off the get-go next year, because he's gonna be paying for some T R A, just get to sixty-five. So, that's just, it's like a Ponzi scheme, it's not, doesn't go to him, it's to pay for the people who are retired.
Pay for everybody that's already retired.
Yeah.
To get their call. We get Jack.
So it, it is, there's a lot of that stuff that once we, the books get settled, it's not all doom and gloom, you just have to figure out what all the laws are. I did find out tonight though, um, I did get an email, we, such a square digger award of four million dollars, which is gonna show up as Minnewaska grade schools is gonna get four million dollars, because we're the fiscal host. So I would guess we're gonna have a special meeting here surely, because we're gonna need to buy some to square for a dollar, and then lease it back to them, so all the legal paperwork's been done, they've sold all the condos. Um, but all of a sudden, that will come, like, flash the bank. I provided daycare okay.
I think the public土地and soil and water got there.
Pope Douglas got twelve million, uh, finished their project. It's not all doom, and the board has authority to renew the referendum at your, at, at this table one time. So, you know, in two years when the levy doesn't, you know, when the levy comes, the referendum comes up, you have the authority, a roll call vote, to, to renew it for ten more years at the same rate. So that's good. And personally, you know what, I'll just say it, next Thursday, I'm always gonna ask for five hundred thousand dollars, because over the next ten years, you're gonna have to try to get home, and you keep what you're doing. It's not gonna be where you can cut off teachers, you know, you're gonna always need four sections at elementary, you're gonna need, you're gonna need all the teachers in the high school. You're just gonna see instead of a class of ninety-three, you're gonna see a class of eighty-two.
This is just based on census or what?
Just based on the current census, until we get a further dipstick, we'll see. But, right now we're sitting at seventy-eight kindergartners, you know, last year we're sitting with less.
We ever done any assessment on how those censuses line up to what actually happens?
No, but that's why, it's in that demographic study too. That's what we were talking about, the board treat, do you wanna go, do you wanna do a deep dive?
We had seventy-six, but what do we have in there now, over a hundred?
Yeah, I know, I agree.
It's always balance out around.
So the question is, do you, should we pay for a deep dive on our census, should we go do a demography study?
I think you kind of need that information.
Well, because I was saying, you're like, last year, we're sitting at sixty-three kindergartners right now, when, what, technically ninety-four. Today we're sitting at seventy-eight now, was it all the work that Spark Twenty Seven is, I don't see it, I don't have a four-year-old. Right, but it's, she's getting bombarded and we're getting more kids in kindergarten, registering, just true. So if it's seventy-eight now, there's a good chance we'll be at ninety-five.
Right.
And there's fifteen to eighteen of over a glacier, which is a good thing, because we don't have room, and we don't have a staff number for eighteen. So, and so. I don't know, it's kind of like, uh, well, what do you wanna guess for it, it's kind of like farming.
Well, it is a little bit of guesswork, but there's definitely. Well, it is a little bit of guesswork, but there's definitely deeper analytics that we don't look at. Cause I remember we were always going, it's gonna be a light year, then it's almost around a hundred.
Well, we get a census, you know, we get a census because we do this dipstick kids, but.
Right.
Then all of a sudden. Exactly. So I've been recommending that we're gonna build a budget on this twelve-seventy. We've been at twelve-seventy-seven all year. We're actually gonna have more kindergarteners, we're gonna have senior graduating. So we've been doing twelve-sixty and then we've budgeted twelve-seventy, use those as our, as our base. And we should see an enrollment over twelve-ninety, as we end the year at twelve-seventy-eight, just by nature of more kindergarteners. Throughout the year, we picked up twelve more kids than we started with. And, you know, I tried to spread you, we're, we're, we're still exiting out the district, but we've never really aggressively gone after kids that leave. And I do think the whole daycare thing, while it's a new point, I don't know. I mean, we're losing kids because there's not a lot of daycare.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know how deep you wanna go, so I think we gotta partner with our county, to our private donor that wants to come forward and just plan very conservatively, because someday we may own that space. Other than that, Mr. Chair, I think we're.
We're good. So we, uh, June first, we talked about.
Is anybody, anybody not, anybody coming Thursday that probably didn't sign off? Zach, are you coming Thursday? All this, this Thursday.
Thursday.
This weekend, uh. I will be there on the first.
Sign these two up. And then, uh, after Germany, you just wanna talk a little, go on to some of the plans.
Yep, and then graduation, that's on the twenty-sixth, everybody's dialed in for that. Uh, June nineteenth is the next board meeting, so.
Don't let anyone else when I say, hey, last board meeting before kids leave, I mean, Mark, I don't know. Got a couple of teachers here, first year without a lot of the COVID stuff. I'd say it's the first year really truly back to normal. And I'd say, you know what, looking at our preliminary test scores, our kids compared to a lot of districts, we didn't take a big dip. I think a lot of credit goes to you guys keeping the COVID community going, keeping kids in school. Uh, I think we're staff, pretty common sense approach.
I think a lot of this, the tech levy that they passed ten years ago to get our, our district ahead of the curve for communicating with students.
The tech levy, we, I backed the broadband that started on the western side and now it's down to the eastern side. And I think the whole thing with the tech levy is, you know what, you have to make a decision next Thursday, not like it's the decision to bring to the community that's gonna have to withstand that some of you, for ten years, your grandkids will be benefiting from the tech levy, not your kids. So, and we're gonna have to, you know what, I need to get a muckadiver daily.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Zach. I will second, all in favor?
Alright.